Now we're recording. All right, we call this meeting to order at six o'clock. First thing in the agenda here is introduction of new board members and the appointment of alternates. And Brock, I guess you are our new selectmen's representative.
Yes, sir.
So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And Doug, I think you've been here.
Yeah.
Lee, you've been here, so hey, pretty good. We do have an application. Each one of you should have it for alternate for Tom Divney. And he's been here quite a bit, so. You know, typically, we do require a minimum of three meetings be attended. But you have already done your three meetings, I believe, Tom, and I think the board recognizes that. So I would certainly entertain a motion to accept Tom's application.
I'll make a motion, we accept Tom's application.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tom, you want to join us up at the table? And Scott Williams just joined us.
Can I hear the gong?
Yeah, yeah, you almost made it before the last clock. Okay, the agenda. Been some changes?
So there have been some changes since the agenda was originally posted. And they are the following. Number five, the private roads building permit request was added. Page two. Under old business, a small i, the invoice for the master plan consultant was added. And I'm also adding an additional breakdown of the invoice as I create a spreadsheet and list them all. So you kind of see where we're at with that. D was added under old business. That was the board to make a motion authorizing and directing the chair to sign the cash letter of credit for W Ralph Trust Inglewood subdivision. And I also would like to include in that that the chair, you also authorized the chair to sign the partial release of covenant. Because that didn't get into a motion at the last meeting, but you guys did discuss it. That he should sign it, but it didn't make it into the motion. I'd also like to add E, and that is an alternative housing committee update. And under that, I'd like to include a review of the contract from Tara Banford. And that's for the planning and zoning. Under four correspondence for the board's information, I'd like to add a B, just to let you know that we had a pre-construction meeting with Piper Doobie. With John and the town engineer, and he's good to go to move forward with his project. That's it.
I'll make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, right? So tonight, our first case, P twenty-two, ten, which is the voluntary lot merger. Forty-six lot sixteen and seventeen. Woodland Realty Revocable Trust and Beverly A. Karen's trustee and owner. And you're welcome to come up to the table if you'd like. And if you can, just if you would, speak into the microphone and just announce your name for the record, thank you.
Beverly A. Karen's trustee, Woodland Realty Revocable Trust.
So I don't believe that there were any real red flags in this or any concerns. This is pretty basic.
Correct, everything appears to be submitted and complete.
Board have any comments or questions for the applicant?
My own knowledge, right aways, is that considered part of road frontage?
No.
It's not.
Okay.
Call it complete?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Oh, case P twenty-two dash ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have you previously merged a lot?
No.
It's like, maybe somebody else. Was one of the lots just acquired, or didn't Don use it in combination?
I'm sorry?
Weren't those lots used together for a long time?
Sixteen and seventeen?
Yeah.
No. How do you mean used together?
As, as, were they the same ownership that Don had, the bikers?
Yes.
But I.
Well, no, the bikers owned seventeen.
Ah, so sixteen is in addition to that.
Yeah, sixteen was my original house lot.
Okay.
And the bikers owned seventeen, and I bought it from them.
Where have they gone?
I'm sorry?
Where have they gone?
They haven't gone anywhere.
Oh, they're still there.
Well, he's passed away.
I never.
Oh, that's not really.
I know, but it's kind of shocking when you. We work together a bit. So this yellow portion is a right of way? Adding a right of way to you?
It's called, it was always called a right of way, but it was never used as a right of way.
Is it called a right of way?
On the plan.
By the neighbors or by the?
In the deeds.
On the plan.
Who has access to that right of way?
Nobody, except the owner.
Okay, it's a little bizarre that you have a right of way to something that's held.
Right of ways go back to history.
The original plan was drawn up in thirty-seven and forty-nine, at which point they were referred to as right of way, but they were never used as right aways.
So you're going to leave that in position, that right of way? As a result of this merger?
I'm sorry, leave it?
Well, you're going to leave the right of way as a right of way, as a result of this merger of lots?
Well, no.
No? Okay, so that.
It was just called a right of way, it was never used as a right of way.
Yeah, okay, but if a right of way is there, it can be used as a right of way at any given time.
Can I, can I share some input on that?
Yeah.
So if you look at the additions to the planner review, gave you some highlighted stuff, so look on page one. And pull out the copy of the tax map. So the original subdivision, that's when they created these little rights of way between the lots. So you had the lot right of way, lot right of way. So over time, since this subdivision was approved, these little rights of way were sold off by the developer. So that right of way actually was included with the road. So the road came down and went, you know, up and down each one of those rights away. So over time, those rights of way got sold off. So that's why, when you look on page one, that yellow section has an open, has an open lot line where I circled it.
Yep.
And when you look on the tax map, it's now closed. So I had to do research to find out, at what point did that lot line become closed? So. That's a ninety, it's actually a nineteen forty-seven plan.
Which is definitely pre.
Yeah.
Who did the original subdivision? Was it G. V. Jones?
Bertha Damon.
Bertha Damon, okay, I see that there.
This, so I understand correctly, these right aways were part of Damon Drive then?
At one point.
Okay.
Yep, but they've, I guess, over time, they've been sold off to the, you know, lot owners.
So she goes up to Delnat and pulls out her D, say nothing about a right of way.
It's, if you look on page six, it's referred to as parcel three. It continues on to page seven, and it does not refer to a right of way anymore.
So it's a twenty-foot wide lot.
Old was known as Bull Alley.
I, I guess I'm still a little hung up on the disposition of the right of way. Who's going to own that right of way when this is all done?
So that would be.
She is, so.
Who owns it now?
I do.
And you own lots sixteen? Okay, so this is what we're talking about, is merging that to lot sixteen?
Correct.
Okay, now we're sure that nobody else has access to this right of way.
They do not, you look on page four of the attachments, that highlighted section.
Yeah.
It talks about conveying any interest the grantor may have in that right of way, as shown on that plan on page one. Lots I and J, which is lot sixteen and lot seventeen.
Right, I and J must have been the subdivision.
Yep, that was sixteen and seventeen originally, yeah.
Did lot eighteen give up their rights to the right of way also?
They never had any rights.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it went down that far, it went the other way. Does that help clarify?
I, I think so, it's very peculiar, but.
Well, that's why I was asking if the right ways were part of road frontage, she's doing away with the right of way.
Well, yeah, if it becomes part of that lot, that frontage of that right of way becomes a part of that lot.
Right, that's why, so now it becomes part of the road frontage.
It was a private right of way, and, and then they, they simply canceled the access to the road and became a lot at that point, and now it's.
Back then in that timeframe, that's why I mentioned G. V. Jones subdivision, they did a lot of these little accesses that they left around everywhere. And they've been problematic over the years, as you can probably imagine.
Yes.
It was probably for fire reasons.
No clue.
There wasn't any access.
I wasn't even a twinkle in my parents' eye in forty-seven.
Get the cows some water.
Yeah, you're probably right, especially if it's double wall.
Yeah. The quote unquote East Dalton Beach was a cow access.
So. So, any other questions from board?
I think it's. Aside from that issue, it's a breeze.
It's good to clean that up, actually.
Yeah. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, do.
Public.
Oh, public, you're right, thank you. Anybody from the public have any comments on this? Hearing none. Thank you, back to the board. Now we'll entertain a motion.
Do, do we have, do we approve this?
Sure we do.
Yes.
This is a lot merger. Because the right of way is technically a lot.
Yeah, but some, some lot mergers, we don't.
Yes, we do.
We should all.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll move on case P twenty-two dash ten of the merger of the right of way lot as well as to lot six, eighteen.
Sixteen, I was right.
And seventeen. With conditions precedent and.
There are no conditions precedent.
Okay, then.
Conditions subsequent though, which is.
Yes.
So we would have the subsequent conditions, right, which is.
There are no, there are no conditions.
Yeah, I just, I just looked for subsequent, that's why I couldn't find it.
All right, so we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda was case P twenty-two eleven, which has been withdrawn. That was the Roberts Knoll Campground.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if I may explain what took place.
Sure.
So I received a letter from Dan Flores, he's the engineer on this application. After notices had gone out to the public and the ad was in the newspaper, he contacted me and asked if they could change the plans to not build the pavilion or the bathhouse. And just add additional three campsites. So considering everything already got noticed, he would have to withdraw from tonight, submit it again for the May meeting. And he'll submit a whole new set of plans, so that was his request to withdraw, and he'll be back next month. That's all.
Next case is P twenty-two twelve, and that has been, at the applicant's request, tabled to five seventeen meeting.
We went right along?
Yeah. You may add to that.
Okay, so I just wanted to add, the reason why this is being pushed off to the May seventeenth meeting is they need to acquire an equitable waiver of dimensions from the zoning board. Before they go through this process, so just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Hey. Not bad, three cases in seventeen minutes.
Don't brag, something will happen.
It's coming. Next on the agenda, case P twenty-two dash thirteen, this is going to be a design review, Norway Plains Agent for Kemper Land Holdings. This is Drew Hill Road Contractor's Yard. We're just in the design review phase, so. At this point, I ask you guys to.
Can I just add something real quick, if you'd mind, Scott? Mr. Chair, in your packets, originally, you were given the entire plan set. As of today, I added this other thing that's labeled revised plan, something on it. And it includes a response letter, so these are some changes that were made after Scott received the review from the town engineer. So instead of printing out the entire plan, I only printed out the pages that were updated.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Scott Lawler from Norway Plains Associates, representing Kemper Land Holdings LLC. With me tonight is Jeremy Kemper, owner of the company. As you indicated, this is parcel tax map nineteen, lot thirty-two, it's located at sixty-seven Drew Hill Road. And located in the rural zoning district, it's approximately thirty-three point five acres in size. It is, the parcel is not located in the aquifer protection overlay or the shoreline protection districts. The applicant received a variance from the Alton Zoning Board of Adjustments on February thirteenth, or February third, excuse me, of this year, for a special exception to allow a contractor storage yard in the rural zoning district. The driveway entrance and general building site area was, is cleared in a subgrade. Currently on site, there's a temporary storage conics and tent, tent where they have stored their equipment over the winter months. Wetlands on the property were delineated by Daniel Coons from IX Wetlands Consulting, November of two thousand twenty-one. Norway Plains did several test bits on parcel March of this year. Kemper, Mr. Kemper has a landscaping company, which currently has five employees. And they're looking to construct a forty by sixty building, so approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. And will have covered lean twos on each side of the longer edge of the building for outdoor storage of, of building supply or landscaping supply, excuse me. Within the building, there will be a small office space and a bathroom, but generally, the most of the building will be left open for them to bring their vehicles in, their equipment inside, to keep it out of the elements. They're proposing a twenty-foot wide gravel driveway off Drew Hill Road. The town has already granted the applicant a driveway permit for this location. The, we've also proposing a gravel parking and unloading area on, in front of the main doors and around this one side and towards the rear of the building. This, there's area suitable for their five employees, actually, there's a lot more area than that, but we have to pick on the, on the plan area for five employees to park. The contractor storage yard is generally one-ton pickup trucks and small dump trucks. You know, they'll have, you know, skid steers, mini excavators, that type of equipment. The Conex storage container is going to be moved from its current location down by the small wetland pocket in the middle of the site, and that's going to be moved up closer to the building, once the building is constructed. There will be no retail conducted at this business or at this location, it's all, it's really just for their own use and office space. Because there is going to be a bathroom on the property, we have designed a state septic system, and there will be an onsite well that services water. The proposed driveway has ditches and culverts, one covert underneath the driveway, that directs all the storm water from the building and the gravel areas to a proposed stormwater management system. This proposed stormwater management system consists of a sediment four bay, which then drains into an infiltration basin. The infiltration basin attenuates the peak in the storm events, allows for groundwater recharge and offsets any increase in runoff resulting from the change of land surfaces. Such that, at the point of analysis or at the property lines, we've been able to maintain zero increase in both total volume and total peak runoff for the storm events to ten and twenty-five years. As Miss Call mentioned, we've had the applicant sent a package off to the town's engineer, we received his comments yesterday. And we provided a, a response to the three comments he had, and that's part of the plans that you have in your, your packet tonight. Their comments were very minimum, you'd like to see some silt fence and some silt sock at areas where runoff is concentrated. At this point, this is located at the outlet structure of the infiltration basin. He also requested that we increase the diameter of the culvert underneath the driveway from a twelve-inch to a fifteen-inch pipe. And he also. Third one. Excuse me. Very minor. Oh, and he asked for more detail on the outlet structure, we showed a trash grate over the top to keep brush and debris from going down into the outlet structure. So we just provided a manufacturer's name and specifics on that. So after, so the property, the project, excuse me, will have some building mounted down, shielded lights on the front of the building to provide lighting for their employees. And the color will be less than five thousand. The building will be serviced by overhead power, electric and communication wires coming from a pole that's located on Drew Hill Road. And these, the applicants already met with the power company, and they've sort of picked out where the pole locations will be, and that's sort of noted on the plan. There's, the applicant has decided he doesn't need a dumpster on property, what little trash that they generate will be, he'll take care of himself and remove it on his own accord. Furthermore, we are not proposing any sign located at the entrance to this. Mr. Kemper has felt that, you know, it's really their own business and really not, we're set up for having people coming by, so there was no need for a sign to be located at the, at the street. And given the rural zone district, it would have only been like twelve square feet, so it would have been really small anyways. We have asked, as part of this application, we're going to be asking for a waiver request to the landscaping requirements. Primarily because the building, as noted on the plan, there's almost three hundred and forty feet away from Drew Hill Road, in kind of a round vegetated area. And you, you know, virtually will not see the building from Drew Hill Road, and so that it's felt like landscaping around the building wasn't necessary. Given the size of the building and the nature of their operation, it is not known that any fire protection will be required. The only state permit this application triggers is the NHD subsurface for their septic system design. We've completed design, it was part of the application package you see in there, once we get, you know, through tonight and everything looks like it's going in the positive direction, we'll submit that for approval from DES. From the federal permit process, the site will trigger the EPA construction general permit for any projects disturbing more than one acre. Which this project does, so we'll file the notice of contempt with the EPA and follow up with the required SWP, SWPP, plan and inspections. That was the bullet items of my presentation with chairman, members of the board, either myself or Mr. Kemper, we'd be glad to answer any questions about the, about the project, thank you.
Thank you. Does board have any questions?
Only one, how about three thousand K instead of five thousand K?
Yes.
Funny if you were going to pick up on that.
Thank you.
No problem. It's just a little yellow or light, that's all.
Is the application complete?
Yeah.
Well, this is just a design review.
Design review.
Chairman, I have a question just regarding storage and materials, mulch, such as that, there's no intent for any storage on the site?
No, we use gray on earth materials, which is pretty much right down the road, where we pick up everything directly from them, take it to the job site directly.
Okay.
What about maintenance of your equipment? We use six oh three motor works, which is over in Tufton Borough. So there won't be any, any repairs onsite, conducted onsite and.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you get the comments from the fire department?
Have not received any.
Um, okay, I'll forward that over to you, but it pretty much is just building related at that point, you know, just talks about heat. point. You know, just talks about heat, smoke, antracarbon monoxide detectors, things like that. So it's nothing, you know, site related or anything, just obviously things to do with the building, just so you know.
Thank you.
And if I heard correctly, so you've got a conics up there now, and you're planning to keep it there, is that?
It's gonna be step, it's going to remain on site, but we're gonna move it away from the wetlands and put it up by the proposed building. We can add the location to.
Yeah, I think that should show up on the plan as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And looking at the plans, um, there's a pond there actually, which doesn't really show up. You show a wetland, but you don't show a pond. I've gone ice skating on the pond, so.
I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that.
That's not hard. I play hockey. No, it's.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It is. I remember when somebody actually lived there.
Chairman, if you'd like, we can note on the existing features plan, the pond.
Like you said, well, the pond is fed by a stream. It's a small stream, but it runs year round. I think maybe in August, it gets a little low, but otherwise, I mean, it's, it's always.
Always flowing. There's actually a natural spring that comes out of the ground on the property. So that's where it's fed from.
I got a couple of them.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's very reliable. Always leave a tin cup there.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that whereabouts does that show up on this?
Well, it's, you see where the, and on the first map, you see there's a, it shows a small building, then there's sort of a clear area towards the fork in the road.
Yep.
Mark is wetland. It actually, it actually has some depth. And then that stream runs right down the property line on the Beckwith property.
Board have any other questions?
A quick question. I just, I'm, I don't know. You've got two different lots, a little tiny, why it was, I think inadvertently became a lot by the road. I don't know. But probably would want to combine those two because there's not much you can do with the little tiny one all by itself.
Yeah, we're actually in talks with my nephew. He might take that off our hands and put up a small house there. So that's why we haven't, we haven't thought to combine.
Rural zone, you have to have two acres.
According to John Devers, it's been grandfathered because it was already a separate lot before.
Right. You can still build on it. Yep. As long as, of course.
As long as I can fit everything in that small space.
Any other comments from board?
In the process of building this in certain water, it's not going to affect the opposing landowner, is it?
No, all the water is directed to the stormwater management system, and then it's all treated and then, then eventually goes back into the wetlands and then feeds into the pond.
Yes, back to the natural drainage.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was that zero impacted at all property lines you'd mentioned earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the hard part was probably the ZVA. I, I think, you know, once you've got the okay, it did, you seem to have all your ducks in a row on this one. So.
It does get steeper towards the back.
Yes.
Develop back there or?
No.
There's plenty of grade on the whole lot by the looks of it.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe they should just discuss the hours of operation real quick just to, for the record.
Yep. Typically, it's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, an occasional Saturday here and there. And we start up, oh, we started up last week, pretty much mid-spring to late spring, depending on mother nature. And then we always close down the week of Thanksgiving. We don't run any operations in the winter time.
No plowing.
You're smarter than the average bear.
My brother is a contractor and he works for Brian Stanley in the area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with him or not. And then I do all the books over the winter months to prepare for tax season. So we don't, we don't run operations in the winter.
Everyone.
Already plowed.
For you.
Spend some time with our families too.
He did come take some classes. We open it to what's the public.
Yes.
Right. Any comments from public? Hearing none. Close the public session.
The chair and the board would be accommodated. We'd like to move to formal applications middle for next month. The board would be willing to accept it.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Thank you.
I don't know what you had tonight. They just have to meet the design review criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, case P 2214, complete disreview of application, public hearing if application is accepted for the excavation permit. No realty represented by Barney Engineering. If you'd like to come up.
Good evening, members of the board.
Evening.
Evening. Andy Sullivan with me and those Keith Spad.
Hi, guys. So I think as a, as a point of order, I think, I'd like the board members to consider who may want to recuse themselves for any potential conflict of interest, whether it be through close association, business dealings, conservation.
We buy sand and gravel from him. Does that constitute, it hasn't previously?
Yeah, have you, I mean, did you also do any assistance in application procedures or consulting in any way?
I don't even have a dump truck.
Did you get?
That's not considered a dump truck anymore.
I'm familiar with conservation and what the property, that's the extent of my knowledge.
Yeah. So I, I, I think that it's probably best that, you know, and I, it doesn't appear that, you know, as an alternate, you, you, you're going to be actively voting this evening. So.
Okay, but it's just a matter of.
As a matter of record.
Seeger records.
Yep. And I think it would be wise to recuse yourself.
Okay, I recuse myself.
Okay. And, and you don't feel the need, Scott?
Well, I've sat on these before, so.
Well, you actually recused yourselves throughout the last application process. It was you.
I think he was recused by the COMCOM. They came in and recused several members.
It was Russ.
That's right.
Scott and Virgil that were recused from the last application. I'm just throwing that out there.
So we just wanted, yeah, we just wanted everything to be on the up and up. That's all.
Well, I think what it was, was as a, as a gravel pit operator yourself was, was the logic behind it. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, but.
I'll, I'll do it. Tell me what you want me to do and I'll do it.
It's, it's your comfort level in, in where you feel, you know, if you, you, we don't want this to end up in a situation where, you know, the board is compromised. If, if you think that there's a risk of that.
I, I would say Scott would be more handy to us than a detriment, because he can speak to gravel permit and the whole process. So I would say he'd be more, because once he recuses himself, he goes, sits down there and he can't say anything.
Well, until we go public, but right.
Which, so anyway, my, my recommendation is that he stay.
I'll stay for now and we'll see where it goes.
All right. All right. That's fine. Thank you. So the first step here is review for completeness. So. And from what I reviewed, and Jessica, you can tell me.
Yep. So you can find that list on page three to the bottom, items required for completed application.
So all those items were submitted and are complete.
I'll make a motion. We. What's the word I'm looking for? No, no, it's not.
Completeness?
We, we, we accept it as complete.
Yes.
Losing my words.
There we go. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger. Any further discussion from board? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay. So. Is there any? That's for. I'm writing a blank. I just caught whatever Tom had.
Waivers, no.
Waivers. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, sorry.
There, there were no waivers submitted.
So there's quite a bit of, of history here. And I believe there was some late added information as well, right? Just cause.
Yes.
You have a email from EES. There's no AOT permit for application submitted at this point. So that's correct.
Really an economic, see if we get through this and then spend the money to get that.
So we also have a new, new a butters, the Manx.
They took, they bought the steel property. They are.
Not an approving butter.
I could maybe expand upon that. I spoke with Mr. Mank on Monday. And what I took away from the conversation is that we both agree that the, that the restoration needs to be finished. And I think that's the common goal here. But until the restoration is finished, he's not approving butter. And however, unfortunately, I've been caught in the circle of you can't decide whether the slope's stable, whether the slope acceptable because of the fill materials. And that's kind of what preempted us reopening the application. It was just, I couldn't get in with a selectman to talk to them. I can't talk to the planning board because the plan was conditionally approved. We've tried negotiating with conservation board multiple times over the last, I don't know, two years, Andy. We've offered bonds. We've offered everything, you know what I mean, to try to work out some amount of agreement. And we've ended up here so that we can talk about really what is required of the slope from a physical construction standpoint.
In, in, in short, we believe that we've, other than the abutting, kind of like last time, other than the a butters consent, which I, I reviewed the Mank's letter. I think we can address those satisfactorily, whether they still are objective or not, but we have a positive response for everything. But that's why we included the mill engineer report on the slope. I think anybody had a chance, I don't know if you have or not, to read that report. He's coming away that it is stable. If you look at your own regs, which I believe is section 15K at page 31. I know the conservation commission had a lot about the stumpage in there, but stumps are allowed in the, in the slope as long as it is stable. The bill engineer report is saying it's stable. So I think that's, that's the $50 question for you guys. We, we presented a professional engineer report. He did borings. Yes, he found some organics in there, but he said they're all compacted. The glacial material between the large, what do you call them? Couplings or?
Holders.
Old big boulders. Everything's very compacted. The way Keith put it on with his heavy vehicles, were they 70,000 pounds apiece or 70?
The dozer is 87,000. The excavator is 107,000. It was working on the slope. So it's, it's well compacted. So it's done in lifts.
So what we're positing here is we have a report from an engineer that did the borings, said despite any organics in there, it's a stable slope.
I guess the question then becomes one of, what they were talking about earlier was the fact that several of the wetlands had drained as a result of the blasting and digging. And the question is whether or not the fill is impermeable and whether or not the wetlands will refill. So that's an important feature. You know, as, as I understand it, that's what, what's probably going to come from the conservation commission. I have not yet talked to them because I didn't see a letter from them.
They're actually, I believe they're gonna prepare one.
Okay.
If I, if I can speak in regards to that. So all the restoration in there so far has been done with the indigenous soil that's within the pit. And it consists, if you look at the geotechnical report of between 20 and 21% fines, which is clay. Tom being a soil scientist can speak as to, you know, the poor draining and, and, you know, relatively good impermeability of a, you know, clay content that high in a till type soil.
Yeah. So we, we didn't sort of designed it so that he would have a, you know, silt. It'd be a lot of silt content in the fill as opposed to gravelly fill, which might be further down the slope line. In front of the wetland area that was marked out, you would have silty type fill with a content of 30% silt, 200 sieve. And he understands that, and that's what they put there. Okay. Test of that is if you go there in the spring, there's water in the wetland, then that works. I, I believe it, it would work. It would hold the fill, the water back. I haven't been there this spring. I haven't been there this spring. Was there looking at that last year and I can't remember. I saw really.
One of the other things that we've done in conjunction with trying to, you know, I mean, satisfy that wetland diminution that we did was we brought the the break of the slope up slightly higher than the natural grade in order to basically sheet the rainwater back towards the conservation property in the 70% of the slope that has been completed, long been seeded.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so I'm just curious, in the Miller engineering report, it references that he used the excavation permit renewal plan in the as-built plan, which are two plans that hadn't been presented to the planning board. So I was just curious as to why those were referenced instead of the plan that was presented when you got conditional approval in 2018. I'm just curious.
Because when we did the geotechnical study, we actually had a current as-built plan that we had had engineered that we wanted to try to submit to the planning board, but because it was conditionally approved, it was closed to any amendments.
Right.
So we so we couldn't, you couldn't receive it because the application, as far as you're concerned, was complete and approved. Conditionally approved.
Right, because you couldn't amend the application. You can only, according to the regs, you can only amend.
Correct. So that's why he has more current plans than you have. Now, what you have here that's been submitted is the most current and the actual existing site plans.
I just was concerned because that as-built plan hasn't been reviewed by the town's engineer or, you know, confirmed by the planning board.
That's in here now, Jessica. So whatever you need, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Just curious.
Yep. We were trying, this was part of the negotiations that we were trying to do with conservation in order to try and operation and satisfy them, you know, so they would give us the approval of our letter. You know, however, it just never fruition. We did the geotechnical, we offered the bond, we offered, you know what I mean? To do a lot of things and we just couldn't seem to come to any compromise.
Yep. Part of my recommendation to the board tonight is to continue the public hearing to next month in order for us to have time to consult with our town council, like you have the availability to consult with your council.
At the end of the meeting, I don't have a problem with that. I just basically wanted to everybody to understand really what we're trying to just, you know, delineate is how do we finish the slope?
Yep.
Because I can't seem to get a straight answer out of anybody, you know what I mean? And unfortunately, conservation is hanging their hat on the fact that the back page of the plan had, you know, regular boilerplate standard stuff that was put in it. You know, with slope fills and so forth on, you know, place that says free of organic material, blah, 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 blah. And that's not the case per your own statutes that I have to do that. However, I didn't catch that when we submitted plans. So that's why we're submitting plans again because we've amended that to take out, you know, I mean, because we can put certain degree of organic material in the slope reclamation. And at this point in the game, I mean, I'm even willing, you know, the remaining stuff that is done, that needs to be done, we can, you know, do the rest of it free of wood. And the wood that is subsurface that we can grab relatively easy and it will clean out. There's approximately, I think, 400 feet of the slope left to do out of 1,200. You know, so we've done a large amount of it, you know, previous to, I guess, any real set agreed methodology in doing it, trying to, you know, be the good guy and be ahead of it rather than, you know, here shut down and.
Yeah, but to that point, you did all of that work without the observation of anybody from the town as well. So and I appreciate that you submit Miller engineers' report and they're very respectable company. But I think that having representation from the town through the town engineer, I think would have, you know, would be the right way to go to verify the materials that are going in and but while I'm on the Miller engineering note here, I just I don't think I've ever seen a test pit or boring's report without a map. There's no map associated with this. There's some pictures of the test pits, but there's no map showing where the 13 test pits took place.
It's literally in the 700 feet of the slope that's been planned. So there's no, you know, I mean, we didn't take any of the unfinished section because it's not finished. And until we, I guess, you know, agree as to how we're going to finish it, then we can, you know, move forward with whatever procedure it is that we agree upon. I have I have no issue finishing this whole whatsoever. I'm not here to argue about that point. I just I just need a straight answer on how to do it.
Right, yeah. And what's going to be acceptable? And I appreciate that.
So is.
Now, I think Miller picked their own spots, right?
Basic crunch here is, is it the slope? Or are there other things?
Yeah, there's there's multiple layers and that's one of the reasons why really probably it's a good idea to continue this because we got it. We we all need to dig into this. We have some new members that aren't familiar with the history here as well. But if you recall that the regulations say you're going to be 50 feet from the property line unless you have the butters approval, then you can be within 10 feet of the property line. And we had situations where it was at the property line, maybe even a hair over. And especially now that we have a new a butter that is that one that was previously approving, although the Conservation Commission didn't approve. We have a newer butter that also doesn't approve, conservation doesn't approve. Well, we need the letter from conservation. I think we need to all take a little time and regroup. I would I would strongly recommend that the board organize a site walk to really get your heads all wrapped around this. I did do the site walk way back.
If we're going to do that, we should go look at some defunct pits that have been reclaimed. Because I know for a fact that they have used stumps and whatever other materials in it.
Absolutely. What has happened in other pits is not relevant. It's not, we're dealing with this case here in this.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is, is the practice is being used.
The practice being used in those locations is wrong. So but we need to look at this application in this case. Yes.
Is there anybody from the Conservation Commission to speak here tonight? We had the previous faux pas was when he came in for an application, gave us the application. There was nobody from the COMCOM here to speak against it and we mistakenly voted for it. Nobody to give us any information. He's saying he needs information from the Conservation Commission. So here we are. We're all here again tonight. We're not hearing from them. I mean, you're talking about continuing this to the next meeting. I think he needs to know what's going to be at that meeting or are they going to show up then? They seem to be the the deciding factor here. Yet they, yet they, they're not here.
Can I speak to that?
Or are they? I don't know.
Well, let's let Jessica speak to that.
So the Conservation Commission just met this past Thursday. So that was the first time that they had a chance as as a commission to discuss the application. So the only thing that I had available tonight to give to the board was a copy of the draft minutes, which is pretty brief. So that was the only information that I had available for tonight because it wasn't enough days. They are going to prepare a letter, a formal letter, listing probably their comments and maybe some demands. I'm not sure what is going to, what it's going to contain. So as soon as I get that, I can send that over to Keith and to Tom and Attorney Sullivan. So I'm sure that will outline the things that they require in order for them to be an approving of butter. There wasn't anything available tonight other than the minutes. It wasn't enough time.
If I may just.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to follow up just a little bit on this. The it and it's not just the Conservation Commission. They weren't the only straw in this situation here. But if you will recall, this this ended up going to court. And so there's, there's a lot involved here that we can't rush into. We do need consult from our legal counsel on this. And and I do recommend that the board go and walk the pit as well to to see and, you know, hopefully, we're all thrilled with what we see.
Right. And and there are further items that were listed in the John's cease and desist order that also need to get taken care of separate from Conservation Commission. There are a lot of aspects involved in this application.
I know. I'm just saying, you know, this is the second hearing that we had. And they're a big part of the rings, yet they're not here.
I agree. I agree. They just wanted to prepare a letter, I guess.
Show up on their own.
Well, they did provide us with the draft meeting minutes, so.
Have I seen those?
I believe I sent them out late in the afternoon. It was an email that included the the email from NHDES.
I got the AOT email.
Disapproving the butter letter from the Manx and
Oh, yeah.
The draft minutes on that.
I did.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you said that they're not allowed to use organic, like wood stumps, anything?
You were not supposed to bury stumps.
Actually, you can.
You can. Exactly.
Yeah, you can.
Under Article 15K, now read it, so you're on regs, stumps and brush shall be allowed to be buried or stored on site. So as long as the stumps and tree parts are buried, I demand to preclude the development of sinkholes and erosion of cover materials. So they are specifically allowed under those parameters. The Miller engineer reports indicated that the way the cells were buried, they did not cause erosion. And if they were sinkholes, a reminder, they would be decades long and coming in. So we do have the right to, it does have the right to bury stumps.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So what's the official definition of a stump dump? Like, what what is a stump dump as compared to burying stumps under the slope? What's?
So I can answer that for you. Because we actually operated one in Osiphe. Essentially, you're entirely filling the 60-foot cut with stumps. And then you put roughly five or six feet of material over the top of it. There is no or very little material at all between the stumps themselves. If you if you go into the Austin pit and you drive down into the pit, you turn around and look back up towards the scale house, you literally see a 60-foot wall, nothing but stumps.
Mr. Chairman, you know where Bosco Bells is, going to the bonds. They got state approval. I cleared the lot. And he got state approval. We don't need to mention names from the state. The three side boundary lines with all the stumps and he filled up against that to keep erosion away from the state highway. And you can see the stumps and all he's got left to do now is to do a three to one slope cover the stumps and a state approved it.
Okay. I'm not sure that that particular application is relevant to what's being done here because it's actually retaining your a butters property.
This, this, this is within 25 or 50 feet of the butters property, which owns that place that sells right next door.
So again, I think, you know.
And there's also a brook in between the two. What I'm trying to just say is stumps are allowed to be buried on your own site.
I'm sure with certain specific approvals, absolutely, and and done in certain ways, I'm I will stand corrected on my statement.
I'm asking if he's if he's doing the slope in the proper compressions and stuff like.
But in essence, you know, you're, we're talking about an area of a gravel pit that invaded an area next to a butter. And one type of material was taken out and another type of material is being put back. The question, I believe, really is going to come to the Conservation Commission as to what their charge is. They are they are bound by a conservation easement, which travels in perpetuity with the land. They are the representatives. They own the land. Town of Alton owns it under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. So their charge is to make sure that what the original deed owner had designed for the property is maintained. And that was supposedly the maintenance of the wetlands and the land. So if the wetlands are not there, how are the Conservation Commission going to be an approving group? So I mean, I think it's it's necessary that the two people work together to find out what's going on here. So I don't know how you can have a a fill that is not approved by one of the acting parties.
That is the question. Okay.
Yeah. And I think, you know, ultimately, this is going to come down to is is some form of a compromise and understanding and agreement on what is acceptable.
And I agree with that. And that's why we're back here because we need somebody to mediate between us and conservation so that we can come to an amenable agreement.
And that's why you had the Miller engineer report. I mean, the the crux of the matter is a stable slope. Okay, and with drainage. And I think the Miller engineer report says it is. If town wants an engineer to go in there from from their side to corroborate or dispute it. Fine, but we're presenting a professional report says it's the type of slope you guys want. It does have stumping in, stumping is allowed.
Okay.
You're saying we should take a walkthrough?
I'm saying that we should take a walkthrough.
Why don't we put in a have the conservation with us at the same time, save time, then we don't have to put it off for these people for another month.
That's a very good idea.
So what the planning board can do.
Time for for somebody that's trying to make a business and a living.
Right.
So I put yourselves in their shoes. I'm I don't even go down there.
Yep.
But what I'm saying is there's somebody here trying to trying to do what's right. There's been a mistake. But the Conservation Department don't want to like Roger was saying.
I think that's an assumption that's being made.
I think I think I think you need to be more read on the history. I think you need to go through the history a little more carefully and.
Kind of know the history. My father was part owner of that at one time.
Right. I mean, I mean, the history, recapping what's occurred in the last two years in this department. I think go through that history and and get yourself brought up to speed on that. I think that's going to be very important. Ask questions.
Conservation Department walkthrough with us, save time.
I'm saying that that's probably a good idea. I don't know if we can command them to do such, but we can certainly invite them.
So so this is my suggestion that the board look at a calendar, pick a meeting date to hold a site walk and then Conservation Commission.
I think the Board of Assembly could tell them to go because they sit at the pleasure of the Board of the Selectmen.
I would also like to invite John Dever as well so that he's on board with everything and making kind of.
And I'd like to invite Dana Huff if possible.
And that was that was my other suggestion to get the town engineer involved, Dana Huff. And we just, you know, we all walk it together so we can all just.
The any onsite is under the the chairman of the planning board. And all questions have to be directed to him. We can't have, we can't be discussing anything. You can, we can ask questions, but they have to go through the chairman. So I mean, we can't have private discussions onsite.
And we should be taking notes, I believe, as well.
Yes.
And just for the record, there has been no active excavation has occurred on that northbound property lying now in about five years. Except for the restoration work that we've done.
Do you have any dates that you are not available? You're going to be there as well?
My shop's 25 minutes down the road, so. And whatever works for you guys. I mean, I'd love to just get it resolved so we can kind of move forward. Obviously, you know, I mean, in essence, to finish the slope so that everybody's happy and we can open back up again.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask if Dana Huff can come up to the table so that we can discuss a date?
Sure.
Um, I want to make sure that he can make it as well.
Okay.
Excuse me. I don't know how that happened.
Is that a ballgame score?
Sounds like the hippie dippy weatherman or something over there.
Not that we wouldn't be that one.
If you grab the, the mic and announce yourself.
Dana Huff, one sixty-two, do it, drive Alton.
Should we pick two dates, rain dates, so in case something happens?
Sure. I'm, I'm pretty flexible, so pretty much whenever you guys can make it. Um, I'm sure John, he's out in his schedule somewhere.
So I, I mean.
Are you guys wanted on a weekend or weekday or?
I can't on a weekend.
What's that?
I can work, do it any day, but not weekends.
Well, we have enough light now at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm available if you wanted to do it after hours too. That's fine.
For me, Wednesday afternoons are, are completely out, but other than that, I'm fairly flexible for the, for the afternoons.
What time can you get back to town?
I could be back here probably by three thirty, so, you know.
We said four, four thirty, that would.
That would work great. Yeah.
If you want to do it at night, I can't do it this week because I have meetings all week. Tis the season.
Tis budget season?
Well, any day between now and before. How much time do you need to, after the walkthrough, do you need Jessica to?
I would like some time to be able to, you know, gather all the comments and.
Right. That's what I'm saying. How much time would you need before the next meeting?
Okay, how about we suggest the twenty-sixth of April at, at four thirty in the afternoon, since we can't make any dates. Start with something. That's a Tuesday.
Why don't we put a couple of days?
So I have a meeting at six o'clock that I have to be back here for that.
Okay. That'll give you a couple of hours, I imagine. That would work, wouldn't you think?
Try four o'clock or is that still coming too tight for you? I could do as early as three thirty if you, if you guys can.
I'm self-employed.
I'm self-employed too, so.
Yeah, that sometimes means you don't have the latitude to do what you need to do.
No, we don't have any choice. You go when you can.
So three thirty, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. Does that work for everybody?
Three thirty?
Three thirty.
It's going to be rain or shine.
Bring your umbrella.
So April, what, what was it?
April twenty-sixth. It's a Tuesday.
Next Tuesday from today.
Three thirty.
Next Tuesday at four thirty.
Morning, but I can make.
Three thirty.
Three thirty. She said three thirty.
And we'll all meet out on site.
Four twenty-six.
So we drive right, right into the pit?
Yeah. You don't want to walk from twenty-eight because you'll probably be tired by the time you get there.
Rest stops along the way. I think last time we went up to the butter's property and we cut in that way.
Oh, that's probably not any easier.
All right, three thirty P M.
So the twenty-sixth at three thirty P M.
And we probably should do a rain date.
Oh, it wouldn't rain on us.
Okay, tough guy.
Hey, I worked in the rain today. I got rain gear. Don't bother me.
Do we want to do it the following day?
I can't do the Wednesday, but I could do Thursday.
Twenty-eight.
Thursday, the twenty-eighth at three thirty?
As, as, as a rain date. Okay.
Look at the ten day forecast. How's that sound?
Hang on a second.
Next Tuesday, it says forty percent chance of rain and next Thursday would be mostly cloudy.
They have no idea. Seven days away. Could be sunny and eighty.
Hey, at least we didn't.
Ask me when the day's over, I'll tell you what it was.
As a suggestion, would it be profitable for everybody to have Camillo available there? Because you may have questions like where he did the pits, that sort of thing.
From Miller Engineering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, was, and was he actually the one that, that was there for the, doing the pits?
Yes.
And, and I would probably suggest to have him mark those pits later on, so the surveyor could pick them up to put them on a plan. Just a thought.
Yeah.
You can't miss it. There's big gates out there and sign at the end and.
On the way home, the big yellow farmhouse on the, on the right.
Yep.
Just after that, that gate.
On the same side by the brook.
Yeah, right, right adjacent to the brook. Okay.
Okay, so.
So we got four twenty-six at three thirty P M. And then Thursday, four. That would be, what date would that be?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
All right, three thirty alternate.
And that's our rain date.
And that's three thirty, right? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, same thing, three thirty.
All right, so I have another question, Mr. Chairman. Does the board want to formally have Mr. Huff do the review of the plans? And Miller's report? So that way he can confirm.
So.
As we're not engineers, I, I don't know what half of the stuff means.
And I'll play one on TV, right?
So in order to do that, obviously, I, I imagine you'd like to get paid.
Oh, that's not necessary. Oh, yeah, thanks.
So we, so we would have to.
Yep.
Yeah.
So have we decided to ask the Conservation be with us also?
We, I, I think that is going to be on there that we are going to request that.
And I'll send out an email reminder, probably tomorrow or the next day or so. Just let, we're all on the same page.
I'd also like to ask Mr. Mank if he's available, if he would go there too. That's no objection.
Public is welcome.
Right. But if you want me to specifically invite him, I can do that as well.
I'm going to have Keith do that.
Yeah, I'll call him.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's the guy that owns the yellow farmhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Full obscure property.
So.
Farm and lock property.
So with all that being said, I, I would like to. Gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion that we continue case until May seventeenth, our May seventeen meeting. In truth, we have that site walk with hopefully Conservation Commission and all the other parties mentioned. So I've made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to ask a question. It's not germane to this, but Jessica mentioned, well, there's a cease and desist order. They're not doing anything there since the cease and desist order, right?
No, it's been closed since October.
What's, you mentioned that's still something to discuss. What's to discuss about it? It stopped working.
I don't know. So I'm not entirely sure how things go, which is why I'd like to consult with town council to just sort of make sure. You know, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Okay. All right, just enough.
Yep.
Okay.
The cease and desist, this order, I think, listed certain things. I don't know what exactly they were, but I mean, you'd have to, I'd have to go through it, but.
Right, but he hasn't opened that. That thing hasn't been operating since.
No, no, I think what she was saying was that in order for things to move forward, those requirements need to be completed as well. I mean, there's been a lot of crap going on. That's, it seems to be where we're looking. Well, some of the, some of it actually, Roger, is legal lease that has to be maintained. That's why she's suggesting we talk to the new attorney.
That's the whole process. That's what they're trying to do is get that cleaned up.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Just wondering why it was there. Nothing, nothing's happening there anymore. So he's complying with the cease and desist, so.
All right. So hopefully we'll see y'all next Tuesday. Sunny and seventy.
Our lot even says thirty-eight raining.
Thank you.
The chair.
Yes.
I was never told whether I was supposed to vote or not supposed to vote. How many? When I first came in.
So as, as an alternate, you, you basically, you get to sit and listen and unless you are called to join.
Right. He can participate in the negotiations.
Yep, you could talk, you can converse, but, but not actually vote.
And sometimes he would appoint an alternate for that.
If someone is absent.
But usually what you've been doing is at the beginning of each.
Well, if we're one short, then we'll just do you for the whole night.
Right, because everyone's here.
How do I know if I'm one short?
If, if I'm, if I'm paying attention, I'll let you know.
Sometimes prompting helps him too.
Oh, it does.
You'll have a chance in June. I may not be here June.
June.
Must be his first trip to Canada.
Yeah, in, in, in May, I'll go up.
Okay.
All right. So next on the agenda, case twenty-two fifteen, private road building permit request. Apply for some improvement on the above named private road, which is E Drive.
I was confused why this came to us.
So this is the same process as the class six?
Yeah.
Permit request is the same thing. And, and you guys look at all the information provided and then you recommend or not recommend the selectmen issuing a building permit.
I, I don't know the area that well, but I thought there were quite a few houses on the lead drive.
There are.
It's just.
I think there's probably only, there might only be one or two lots left in there.
That's, that's what I was thinking. So.
Yeah.
Uh, it, you know, it, it may be a class six road, but for the other people to be living there and who are further up, the road has to be maintained to a certain degree. But it's, it is up to the selectmen to make the decision. I think that there's enough information here to simply say that we simply forward this to the selectmen.
So if you had picked up your packet earlier, like before tonight, there was some additional paperwork that was given to you and you should have the police and fire department comments.
I, I feel comfortable with. I'll make a motion that we recommend that this be sent forward to the selectmen to decide.
I will second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on this?
I think it's in keeping with the area that has several houses already. And I think it would be inappropriate not to.
Yeah.
Approve of this.
Yeah.
So, all those in favor? Any opposed? There we go. Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't have to struggle the word private road, did we?
You noticed that?
I did not school that.
All right. So under old business, we have the master plan update.
Yes.
Includes the invoice.
Yep. So last month, I told you that I was going to do a breakdown of all the invoices. So that was provided to you with the original warrant article for twenty-five thousand dollars. There's a total of three thousand seven hundred forty dollars and one cent left over. So that's that.
Left to be used.
Left to be used. Now, left to be expended.
Is this the first warrant article that came through from last year when we, we gave an additional monies?
Yeah.
That's not reflected here.
Right. So you'll see in this breakdown, three eight twenty-two warrant article number thirty was the nine thousand. We haven't even touched that yet. So.
So we have twelve thousand seven available.
We have three thousand seven hundred and forty.
Plus the nine thousand.
Well, yeah, sorry. It's late.
His math is too quick for you, Jessica.
Did she graduate from all?
No.
So that's that information.
Very dud.
So hold.
Would you want to do an update on that?
Tom, just want to give a brief update? We, we kind of are, are not much further than we were two weeks ago. We're, we're actually meeting every two weeks now. And we're still reviewing chapter four land use. We didn't get through it at our last meeting, so.
I, I think more than anything, it is a pleasure dealing with this. I don't know how many of you have met Tara Banford or not, but her writing is terrific and it's very readable. It's the sort of thing you can pick up and you can sit in a chair and read it. You don't have to work your way through it, you know, trying to, you know, memorize things and it, it. It's just such a pleasure to have things so free flowing. And we're working on a number of different chapters at the time right now. We've only done a draft of the land use. Then there's going to be more stuff and then, then we're going to bring it in and then there'll be more drafts after everybody reads it and goes through it. But so far on the chapters that we've been working on, and I haven't seen them all, but I mean, I, I'm really pleased with the quality of it and the usability of the master plan. Because the key is, and we're definitely going to be recommending that there be a master plan committee ongoing, because the master plan is no good if it's written and put on a shelf and nobody uses it.
And thirty years old.
It has to be a working thing that they're constantly being pestered by, remember you were talking about this? You know, we got to get things done. So it's not just doing it once and forgetting it. It's, it's, it's something that's necessary for the future of the town.
Is there a timeframe for when it's to be completed?
Twenty-four. No, tw- no, twenty-three, isn't it? Yeah, twenty-three.
Right, a rough, so sort of like a final draft, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
But I mean, if, if anybody's curious and wants to get advanced copies, talk to Jessica. If you want to see certain chapters, you're worried about something or concerned. You know, it's, it's open because we're, we're going to be starting to put things out.
Has that been posted as the, probably not, but the workings on the website of, of where they, the hour of the master plan, I just think, even though if you just stamp draft on it, you know, people will know which direction people are going.
I, I believe it is on the town's website. If you go to the, if you go to the planning and zoning page, we at the top, there's like a little button you can click on that has.
And it's updated with what their.
Yeah, as things are corrected, you know, I mean, it's.
Yep.
It's a work in progress.
Always is.
And I, I do have one other thing to add for the master plan update is we're going to do a photo contest for the cover photo for the document. So I need to draft up some wording on that to post it on the Facebook page and sort of around town. Already drafted up a, a release so that we can, you know, allows us to use the photos. And then that will give us an opportunity to add photos throughout the document to make it fun instead of just it just being.
I'm going to be getting a picture of the ice house that was in Mount Major Park. Five-story building, probably three hundred feet long, a hundred and fifty.
I'd love to see that one.
Yep.
So I have pictures of the one that was on, on, oh, God.
With, with the Finifey Land now, back.
Juhul's old place, when that ice house down there was.
And had a side railroad siding right there and everything, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you would like to submit that, we're going to discuss this tomorrow night and sort of release the.
Quality of the picture isn't so good because it's bazillion years old, but.
So contact me after tomorrow and I'll, I'll get you.
I'll have to dig it out.
I'm going to put it on the website as well.
I'll email it to you.
Okay. And Bill, did you have anything else? I know it was your first meeting.
No, it's first that's, they're, the good, they're following the, the survey, you know, that was sent out and everything. So I, I, I found it very interesting, especially where, you know, we're following along with what the people gave back.
The feedback.
The feedback from everyone. That's the biggest consideration is the feedback from everybody.
Right.
I thought that was pretty neat.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, cool. Next under old business, NHMA to hold free virtual workshops. Be elected or experienced members. Sign up now.
So obviously the April fifth one is no good.
Yep.
Um, if you were to sign up for the May seventeenth, there's a deadline of Friday if you're interested. Um, just let me know. I can sign you up or I can get you information and you can sign up for yourselves. Just contact me. Let me know if you're interested. And it's pretty much for the same thing.
Yeah, skip ahead.
So C is pretty much the same thing. The New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development. These are the workshops that the planning staff attend every year. This year, they're doing it on two Saturdays. I don't know why. And it's just virtual, but also, you know, new members, experienced members, if you feel that you need a refresher, you can always attend. And again, let me know if you want to sign up.
All right. Item D, the. All right, uh, item D, the board needs to make a motion authorizing the chair to sign the cash letter of credit for Ingles. W W Ralph Trust, um, and also for the partial release of covenants. So if somebody here on the board wants to. Take a stab at that, obviously.
I will not be voting on that.
You'll be refusing yourself from this one. So uh Lee, would you like to uh for this vote step in and so, okay.
I'll make a motion then that the uh. We authorize the chair to sign a cash letter of credit for W W Ralph Trust. Um, and also to sign a partial release for of the covenants.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't spend it all in one place.
I'll take, I'll take that, so.
It's like at home.
How that works.
So I'm actually, I'm gonna go give this to Trisha since you can put it in the office, um, so that way it doesn't get lost amongst paperwork, just so you know.
Yeah, what was it?
Still like at home.
Still like at home.
Sharon found some checks.
You missed my name.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You remember Sharon found some checks in the back of a drawer from five years before?
Uh, item E, which was added under other business, the alternate housing committee update. And the contract review with Tara.
The alternate housing committee meeting will start this Thursday. I will not be able to attend it, but I'm gonna come in and talk with Jess. In the afternoon to kind of pick up where we left off back last fall and uh get it going and. We'll be moving forward with that.
Is there any, anything new from the state?
Well, you know, one of our big crutches was, we spent a ton of time on last year was the short term.
Yeah.
Rentals and uh we're gonna leave that alone for right now.
Yeah.
Um, just because I think there's a lot of legal things happening above us.
They have voted on it and they've put it to committee.
Yeah.
Um, there's a great article that Tara just shared with me earlier today. I'm gonna send that to the committee so they can kind of.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, I was impressed that the governor of veto basically said he thought the town should take care of their own business, not the state.
Yeah, so is that.
You share that with all of us, but.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I'd be interested in that, so.
Yeah, so I I don't know exactly where it will take us this year. Um, people have ideas. John, I'm sure will be part of it and he has items. And usually that come up and beat him in the side of the head that we need to fix. And so uh.
Is there um a subcommittee working on that now? Is I thought there was.
Everything's went into to winter recess after the fall.
Too much. Yep.
No, because it's just, you know, perfect example that shooting down. Had to be Airbnb.
Yeah, it wasn't the gun that shot people. It was someone that shot the people.
Two hundred, two hundred people in the house.
Um.
So I had.
It's a big house.
Or is there more?
So, Mr. Chairman, I had one more item under E, the alternative housing committee. So you guys should have received a copy of the contract for Tara. It's the planning, it's entitled Planning Services Agreement. That you just got like tonight. You really haven't had a chance to look at that.
That was in two weeks.
So um she would be the planning and zoning consultant, so that was the warrant article that passed. That was article number thirty one for for five thousand dollars. And so she was um to assist us with the short term rental ordinance. The conservation subdivision, like cabin cottage colonies, things like that. So that's what this warrant article was for. So she drafted up a contract. I've taken a look at it. Um, it's, it's very similar to the master plan consultant. Contract, so it doesn't really differ other than just. Like V compensation, she just lists the amount of hours. Um, other than that, I feel very confident that if the board felt comfortable. Making a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract, um, I I feel very confident that.
So moved.
Good as is.
Yeah, it's about as straightforward a contract as you want.
Yeah.
All the documents belong to us.
Yeah.
What more do you want?
Need a second.
Well, we had a motion. We need a second.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Lee, I forgot to announce that you were back sitting quietly at the table when Scott was here.
Can't hold him down. You can't hold him down.
Okay, um. So new business approval of meeting minutes. Great, thank you, Dana.
Make a motion. We accept them as, I didn't find any corrections.
There was one tiny grammatical error and I will never remember where I saw it, so.
You didn't circle it and put S P on the corner?
No, I didn't, because I read them online, so.
Oh.
But it was nothing that was heartbreaking. So we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Any comments?
I found them quite informative, because I was wondering. Alternative housing, I think I'm on that committee.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, correspondence for the. Board's review, discussion, action, would make a motion to release remaining funds in stormwater drainage review escrow account for Piper Dubby LLC. Transfer said funds placed into an escrow account for the construction observations, six hundred and four dollars.
Yes, six hundred and four dollars left in the escrow account for the stormwater drainage review. So um the board should make a motion to um. Release the funds from that account and transfer the remaining amount, the six hundred four, over to the construction observation account.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Didn't think so. Um. Correspondence for the board's information, um, so amended notice of decision for twenty two O T O two, excuse me, the boat storage.
Yeah, so this just explains that I had Drew come in. I I amended the notices of decision to take off the fact that those site plans would get recorded.
Which they don't.
Which they don't. So um I just, just letting you know that they got amended and Drew came and does sign up.
Have we thought anymore about how to store this stuff? Uh, base, uh, whatever, because uh there's been a lot of stuff over, as we've all talked about, that this kind of filters away in time. And I I feel like the town should probably really start to update their storage of of documentation.
Right, and we I've had many discussions with Josh about this. Um, and I think we haven't decided whether um scanning in the case information. Should get attached to um the avatar, like the assessing database, or if all of that information. Can get scanned in and attached to the G I S system when that comes up and running.
Perfect.
So then that way you can just pull up the G I S, you have all that information, you can access planning, zoning, conservation, that, you know, assessing all of, all of that stuff. Uh, so you just could type in a map and lot, and then you have all the information in front of you.
One dumb question.
Of the like the site plan.
Yep.
That needs to be held. Um, and I think maybe we should start to look at it amending our things, so to have the engineers. Give us a digital copy of everything they've done. That way you can file it digitally.
Right.
And it's it's not gonna be an effort to, oh, gosh, I gotta run out and get this, this, all the stuff scanned. We don't have to do that.
Well, we have that scanner, so the scanner in the office is now up and running.
Yeah.
So I can scan in the signed plan. So that's what you're really gonna wanna have.
Scan full sheets?
Yes, right now I can only scan it to a flash like a thumb drive. So we're baby steps. We're getting there.
Well, Josh will fix that.
Actually, yeah, um, we just need some upgrades to Adobe in order to.
And now you're gonna just decide, and probably the board of selection, that's in their purview to decide where to store it and how to store it.
Right, so where um there have been many times, it's just a matter of what's the best format, you know, uh, to attach everything to.
When we went through the site plan regs, didn't we, we went through a whole thing about having requiring electronic submissions as well?
Yes.
So, so that takes a little bit of the edge off.
Yep.
Yeah, and and I think if they do that, then we probably can relax some of the, what, five sets of prints that we've got to do.
Exactly.
And, you know, they're four, five bucks a sheet, and, you know, you got ten sheets, you know, it's fifty bucks a clip, and, you know, it's real money all of a sudden.
Yeah.
And it's just to be thrown away eventually.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
One dumb question, being the non-techy here. What is the chance of hacking and losing stuff? I I don't know. I have no clue.
I don't think any of us know.
I can tell you the risk is higher if it's on a server sitting in this building than it is if it's out on the cloud.
Yeah.
I have, I mean, so so that it goes to the cloud?
It may, so that's sort of the discussions that we're having. It probably will.
But I mean, you know, it, the concept of, you know, somebody. You know, blocking things and and trying to get us to pay a.
It it's it's always gonna be a chase because there's something there on us and we're gonna have to fix it and then we're smarter than them. They're gonna be smarter than us again, so.
But if we don't have paper copies, the question is, are we screwed?
I'm curious, do you do this only at a planning board level or is this higher up in terms of, you know, the town's interest to have record retention?
I mean, the town has has a record retention program.
Yeah. Do you try to be consistent in the approach in terms of it's all for storage and all?
The bulk of the town's record retention system is mandated by the state.
Right. I mean, with planning.
And one of the biggest problems is 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 space, because the number of different cabinets that are full.
Well, see, this is why I'm saying, you know, the digital file doesn't take up space.
Floors are gonna go down to the cellar pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's always still items that are gonna have to be held.
Of course.
Original signature, that sort of thing. And I mean, that's what we have to do in our business.
Every rule.
But everything else in in our business, you know, we, it's all scanned.
Yeah.
And it's shredded.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and and in in my operation, we scan every invoice that comes in and gets scanned in. I mean, everything and and it's just great when you go to find something that's old and there it is.
Just do a search.
Yeah.
And you don't get to look through a thousand boxes?
No.
Did you see you're missing, yeah? The old ways.
All right, um. So I had, uh, so we covered correspondence A and then B, we had added pre-con meeting with Piper Dubby.
Yep, just so that just pretty much just letting you know that we met. And he's, you know, moving forward with the town engineer, um, contacting him with the appropriate uh construction observations and. Then he can just go ahead and get his permitting from John. All squared away.
Great. Uh, other business before the board, Russ Wilder sends his gratitude to the board. Appreciated card. Public input on non-specific cases, anybody?
Listen to him.
Hearing none?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
My bill was right at the edge of the seat for that one. Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You can.
No, not quite.
Too late, you missed a chance.
Okay.
Um, before you guys leave, um, I need the members um to sign Tom Divney's paperwork so we can provide it to the clerk and he can get sworn in.
Get sworn out.
Well, we can do that right now.
That's happened before.